I call to order the town council regular session. Today is Monday, March 11th and the time is 7:34. And we have the honor and the privilege to have Girl Scouts and Brownies with us in town chambers today to celebrate Girl Scout Week which is starting very soon. So it would be our pleasure to have the Girl Scouts and the Brownies to come forward. And I'm going to have you state your name into the microphone. And then we're going to ask you to start the pledge. So if you could come forward. I want you to state your name into the microphone.
Maya.
Ava.
Deoni.
Sarah.
Ashley.
And we're going to give it to Ashley. Is it no, Sarah? Sarah to lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the country for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you can stay right here, I'm going to move the proclamation right to the front. Proclamation is new business item 13 and it is on page five. So this is for all of the Girl Scouts. This is a resolution adopting a proclamation in honor of Girl Scout Week as follows. Girl Scout Week is March 10th to March 16th, 2013. So whereas Tuesday, March 12th, 2013 marks the 101st anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas through Girl Scouting, girls grow in courage, confidence, and character and learn to make the world a better place. Whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls, has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. Whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing the interest and skill levels of today's youth in math, science, and technology, careers into fulfill our country's economic needs. And whereas through participation in Project Undercover, a council-wide community service project, every girl will learn that she can make a change for the better in her community. Whereas the Girl Scout Cookie Sale is the world's largest girl-led business, teaching financial literacy to girls of all ages. And whereas the Girl Scouts of Rhode Island Incorporated, which serves 12,000 girls in the Rhode Island area, will be celebrating 101 years of an American tradition with more than 3.4 million current Girl Scout members nationwide. Now therefore, we, the town council of the town of South Kingstown, do hereby proclaim the week of March 10th through the 16th, 2013, as Girl Scout Week in the town of South Kingstown and urge our citizens to support Girl Scouts and their endeavors. So with that said, I will present the proclamation. I guess I will give it to you and you can pass it down the line. Congratulations.
Thank you. And if you want to give it back to Sarah and she will.
Thank you very much.
Nobody, we're all getting the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you so much. This is one of the highlights of the town council when we have scouts in the town chambers. Thank you. And I believe the mango creams is the new cookie for this year? Yes. Thank you. Dale, my apologies, but if we can now do the roll call, sorry.
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Here.
Councilwoman Haley.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We also have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session from February 19th, February 21st, and February 25th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session from February 25th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And lastly, we have the closed executive session from February 25th.
I move approval of those minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I also would like to move one other item up to the Communication J, page four. Do we have Nicole here? Hi Nicole. If we can just move Communication J on page four up and then we will proceed with the rest of the agenda. J. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Let me just get through the consent agenda. Would any town council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Carol. Page four, J is, "A Communication Date at March 7th, 2013 From Nicole O'Malley, Neurologic Music Therapist, Hands in Harmony LLC Seeking Support for House Bill 2013, House 5445, An Act Relating to Health and Safety, Licensing of Music Therapists That Would Provide Guidelines for the Licensing of Music Therapists by the Rhode Island Department of Health Is Received and Filed and the Town Council Further Directs." And Nicole, if you'd like to come forward and explain the good work that you're doing in the bill, that would be great. And then we'll see if we have questions. The microphone is right here. Thank you. Yep.
I'm a music therapist, not a politician. Much better at that than this. Thank you for taking the time to put me into the agenda. I understand that everything's very hectic. My name's Nicole O'Malley. I'm a neurologic music therapist. I have a small business in Wakefield, Hands in Harmony. And I'm also the chair of the Rhode Island Music Therapy Task Force in Rhode Island, obviously. For those of you unfamiliar with the field of music therapy, we're an established accredited health profession. We use music to address non-music goals. My company services clientele from birth through geriatric 100-plus with a variety of diagnoses. We are qualified professionals. We receive our degree in music therapy. We have to complete an internship in music therapy. We have to take a national board certification exam in music therapy. And that certification exam needs to be maintained every four years by 100 continuing ed credits, very similar to the related disciplines, speech, OT, PT. We have a certification, not a licensure, because we're a smaller field. When I first moved here, I was the only music therapist in Rhode Island. So a state isn't going to have a license for one person. So we maintain a national certification and that's what we're seeking with this bill. We're looking for the state to recognize our field as qualified professions, as it is on a national level. That, one of the struggles that we have here is that because music therapy doesn't recognize music therapy as a qualified profession, anybody can practice music therapy. There have been state-run organizations that hire under-qualified professionals to practice music therapy, I think honestly, not knowing that there's even a field out there with qualifications and certifications to do so. So the state would be liable for those professions. Whereas I have, if I were to do something unethical, I have a Board of Ethics, a scope of practice, and my certification could be revoked. So this bill looks to recognize our qualifications at the state level, as well as maintain a list of certified music therapists via registry through the Department of Health. I know the bill talks about licensure. There are some edits that Representative McNamara submitted, so they'll come up when it goes through the House. But those are the two things that we're seeking. We're looking for essentially title protection, as well as maintaining the list of qualified music therapists that's already maintained through our national organization. So we pay somebody to do that already. We have to maintain dues for our national organization to make sure that everybody that practices is ethical. So it would just be the local therapist that would have that information at the state I have additional information if anybody has or would like any additional information on music therapy or on the bill that we're seeking. And if anybody has any questions, I'm certainly open.
So let me see if there's any questions here at the table. Jim?
Will the state bill be as tough as the national or vice versa? Or they same?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Will the state bill be as tough as the national requirements for licensing?
The state would be the same. The state would be to recognize our pre-existing national requirements at the state level.
Right, so it's not weakened?
No, it's the same.
All the questions here at the table?
Well, I have plenty of questions. I don't feel I know even anything about it, to tell you the truth. The bill is here, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. We just got it right now.
Okay.
I don't even know where to begin. I mean, it sounds like, you know, you have plenty of credentials, but I'm wondering, is this, is this going to prohibit other people from getting this kind of therapy who might be doing well with somebody who doesn't have the credentials that you have?
No. We already have a title protection on a national level. So if you're practicing, if somebody's practicing as typically people here practice as a music healer, it doesn't prohibit people from practicing what they're already practicing. If somebody's already hired as a musician or a music healer, it would just prohibit them from calling it music therapy, since they're not certified or qualified to do so.
So this is, this music therapy is recognized like say by insurance companies?
Recognized by JCO. In other states, it's recognized by JCO, Medicaid, and Medicare in other states. It needs to be recognized a little bit more through a state for it to be recognized at this particular, in Rhode Island. We don't have the recognition at the state level. But in other states, there are Medicaid waivers, Medicare. JCO recognizes it. We have our own CPT code for partial hospitalization program. So there's, and we're able to use CPT codes, that's the coding when you bill insurance companies. We work on things like gait training, so walking, speech, and language skills, we just use music to do so. So we'd use the same codes, except the one code that we have, that's our own.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, we just got this to read a few minutes ago. Do any of our local schools, school department, are you recognized? Are you currently, are there some districts who have hired them?
Yes. I'm contracted through a number of schools in Rhode Island and we have a national letter idea recognizes that the list of related services is not exhaustive and may include art, dance, music, speech, when deemed appropriate by, or deemed necessary by a team. So there are a number of schools, that's the majority of our business, schools and early intervention actually is my company's majority of our clientele. So we're listed in the IEP as a related service.
IEP as a related service?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Yeah, Jim, just to follow up on that, I recently have attended, within the past year, a couple of IEPs that the children do have written in their IEPs, music therapy. I also have a music degree. It was an interest of mine to pursue that further, god, 35 years ago, and I never did. But I have the highest regard for a music therapist in tapping into different hemispheres of the brain that, you know, to really service children with disabilities, so. And I think that what this bill does is it recognizes, you know, the certification just as a teacher receives certification, you know, and requirements to maintain their certification. I think that this state of Rhode Island just would recognize what's happening at the national level.
Mm-hmm.
Did I summarize that in a few words? So I'm fully going to support the bill.
I just, I just have another question because I did read this and I wondered how it was brought into the school-aged children, but in your speaking, you talked about the geriatric population as well. Are you bringing that into senior services centers or is that something they have to seek out too? How are you working that in with the older population?
We've had some contracts, typically in Rhode Island, it's been through grants. We've worked with a number of Alzheimer's patients, because there's been a lot of research on music and Alzheimer's. A lot of our clients can sing and retain songs from childhood where they don't remember their names. Some of our clients can, after a while, even at times remember us, which makes absolutely no sense in the world of Alzheimer's, but it happens. And it's through, like Ella Miss Whaley was stating, that music happens in a different part of the brain. So for somebody who has a speech impediment, like you may have heard on the news with the congresswoman that was shot, she learned a lot of her speech, again, through music therapy, through singing, because speech happens in two very specific areas of the brain. Singing happens in both hemispheres, it happens in both cortices, it happens everywhere. So you can use music as a means to access and, because the brain has something that we call plasticity, and I'll try not to get too neuro-boring, but it has something that's called plasticity, which means it's always changing. And we can use music to re-tap into some of those damaged neural areas, which is the case in any disability, Alzheimer's, children with speech impediments, children with difficulty walking, autism. We use it to just help reroute the neural networking system of the brain and establish something that is, will work, since obviously what's happening in there isn't currently working.
Kind of like the old saying, they're playing our song.
Yeah.
Carol?
So right now, how do you get your clients? Who do you get them from?
We are mostly contracted through and contacted by school districts and early intervention companies in Rhode Island. I'm actually fairly proud to say that of the three employees that we have, we all have full caseloads and I only have two people that pay privately and that's because they've requested to do so. Everybody else is through schools, early intervention, or institutions, because it's, I understand the economy, it's really difficult, and I try to help families access the service in other means. So women and infants, we've done some pilot programs there for breast cancer patients and pain coping techniques. You know, places like that. We've, we really, it's diverse. We like to practice and keep our, that's why I did private practice, I wanted to have the diversity. And honestly, when I came back, I'm from Rhode Island, I thought I would contract a little bit here and then quite frankly, I thought I'd move to New York where everybody's full-time. But I had some families that were very strong advocates and they said, hey, you know, we're going to lose our music therapist, so we better build our caseload fast. And they built it to the point of me having, you know, a multitude of employees and seeking these really big business things that I never thought I would be trying to pursue.
Can I just follow up? So what will you gain by the licensing that you don't already have?
Well, gain, I spend a lot of time on the phone answering the same questions. I spend a lot of time in meetings, fighting the same fight. And we'd gain the recognition at the state level where we could say, look, you know, this is, you can have many reasons for not including music therapy on a child's IEP that are acceptable, but there are some that are not. And we have that already at a national level. And I don't want to spend all of my time, I'm a music therapist, I want to spend my time practicing as a music therapist. I don't want to spend my time arguing and fighting things that we already have established at a national level. You can't say that music therapy is not a related service, because it is. And I have a national letter from the United States Department of Education that states that. So it just, I feel like it's a waste of time and hours. And as a small business person and mom, and I just don't have time for that. I want to spend the time with my clients and I feel that that's what this would help me do.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, you're getting clients, you're on the phone with these questions, but is this going to turn into that the school departments in each city and town is going to be required to hire a music therapist?
A school?
I mean, with the budgetary concerns that we already have.
Sure.
It begs the question, you know, by the licensing of this, I mean, we are, you're already recognized by the school departments.
We're already in there, right.
I'm just wondering, I mean, when you talk about licensing, you talk about exams, you talk about fees to keep your license, certain people who can no longer practice because now there's a license attached that maybe they had most of the requirements, but didn't have some small portion of the requirement, so now they can no longer practice. I'm just wondering, I'm trying to think it through, like what effect it has all the way down.
Sure.
I can see it for you, it's very important, but is it important for every music therapist? Are there people practicing this that are doing a great job? And is it going to require that school departments have to hire full-time music therapists? I mean, is that where we're going?
I don't see it going there at this point anymore than it already is. If a team determines that any service is required, then that's when, the only time that they're required to provide that service. We have to do an assessment, the team has to request an assessment, just like any other field. So I don't see that changing.
Right now, you're like an independent contractor with the school systems, is that what you are?
Yes.
Is that going to change at all?
I don't see that changing. And I'm not seeking to, I've been offered by some of the agencies I work for for full-time employment, I'm not interested in that. I like to maintain my own.
I think what it is, is just recognizing the work that's going on. The state of Rhode Island is not recognizing the work that's going on.
They're getting paid by the school departments.
School departments hire, right, school departments hire. So it's not going to interfere with, you know, any changes with the school department. The school department, right as it stands now, can't go out and hire someone to provide music services for kids with disabilities or their non-disabled peers without either a music degree or a music therapy degree. So nothing, none of that would change. That's not, you know, it's just recognizing that music therapist, you know, a music therapist and do good work with kids with disabilities. That's.
I just know once you establish a test and a license, there's a lot more that goes along with that, that it has ramifications.
I think our test is already established and our certification is already established.
You're already doing that.
Yes. We're not looking for Rhode Island to establish its own test and certification process. We're just looking for Rhode Island to recognize what we have that's already been established.
Be careful what you ask for, because once you ask for a licensing, that does happen. Then you have to get licensed in each state that you want to work in.
Right. And music therapies looked at that, but because we're so small, just a couple of states have done that, Georgia's done that, New York's done that. But for Rhode Island, and when I met with Representative McNamara, we really felt that that wasn't necessary in Rhode Island, that we already have a test that we passed, we already have to maintain it, we already pay an organization to do so. So the only thing that we're really looking for in Rhode Island is for them to recognize what we have already established.
Let me just say this final point. I don't know a professional person in Rhode Island that doesn't have to pay some kind of fee to get their license.
Sure.
So you would probably land in the same boat.
Probably.
We've no lawyers, real estate agents, teachers, everybody has to pass the test, pay a, I don't know about teachers, I guess it's part of their contract, but.
No, they have to do that too.
They do.
Just be putting them right in the bracket with, with the rest of them.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I don't see, I don't know why you'd want it, but.
I don't want to speak on behalf, but I think that the reason why they're requesting it is because of the service that they do do for the children and, and they're not recognized for the work that they do. So I just see it as a recognition, you know? With the fine work that is done. So anyways, other comments here at the table, I know I'm going to support it. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we support the bill for licensing of an act relating to health and safety, licensing of music therapists, H5445.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And Nicole, I'm glad that you came because I couldn't have done half of what you did.
I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate taking the time. I understand that music therapy is so new to Rhode Island and I appreciate taking.
Did you want to speak about work done with Easter Seals at all? I mean, that's really how I got the information, I'm sorry, Carol.
Can I just say one thing? I'm not opposed to what you do. I was just trying to figure out why you would want to go through the process.
And I completely understand. I'm a, I've developed quite a tough skin. I've been practicing here since 2003. I'm, I'm, there's not much you can say that can offend me anymore.
Well, let me tell you, you know, I'm a lawyer. If I could have a national license and not have to get state by state, I'd love it, so.
Sure, sure, sure.
Carol was actually looking out for protection, like, you know, they're going to have to stop paying fees and they're going to, you know? But if you could talk about briefly about your work with Easter Seals?
I started, when I started working with families, again, music therapy's always been my passion, but I learned quickly that I couldn't accomplish all that I needed to accomplish just doing music therapy, that I needed the speech therapist, the physical therapist, the occupational therapist, I needed everybody to collaborate with. I needed people that specialized in their areas, I needed them to take my area of expertise and bring that to their area as well. And I also realized that that's just not how things are done. That's, it's not feasible, it's difficult to accomplish. And that the families got left out of the dynamic. I'd be working with a client, but then they'd go home and there'd be so much disruption in their house that they wouldn't have time to transfer those goals. They wouldn't be able to transfer all the wonderful things that we did. Or I'd see them in the house and their siblings were, you know, throwing my drums out of my cart because they weren't getting the attention that they needed and they wanted to do something musical. So I kind of started, again, I love music therapy and that's what I practice and will continue to practice. In doing that, my goal is with Hands in Harmony, to offer a long-term, one-stop-shop in Rhode Island, to offer collaborative services to families. So families can come and receive multidisciplinary services to treat the whole family, be it music therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, maybe take a music class or a dance class and instead of busing their children from one activity to another activity to another activity, they can come and a child can receive a therapy, another child could maybe receive a lesson. The parents, in the case of women and infants, the spouse could receive a support group, the woman could receive the support group. Or in the case of a special needs children, maybe they could go and take a dance class together, because with my families, the divorce rate is very high. They don't have time to nourish their relationship. So they can take the time to do whatever they want to do, or they could take a walk or they could get a massage, but it's just not feasible in many places right now. And so Easter Seals, I've worked with the physical therapist there for a while and that's how I met up with Easter Seals and they have a very similar mission. So we've been trying to collaborate and create something along those lines. I call it the big fish dream. But that's what we're trying to create here. That's what I'm hoping we'll be able to establish.
Right. And we have a connection with Easter Seals right here on Robinson Street with our school department too, and it's, it's really growing and I'm glad to see you doing such good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions before Nicole leaves? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you again.
We're going to go back to licenses. We have a resolution granting a victral and holiday sales license to TLC Coffee Roasters Kingston LLC, 100 Fortin Road, Unit 2, Kingston, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief, application by Keith Merritt, 3362 Kingston Road, West Kingston, Rhode Island, and this is new and continued from February 25th. Hello, how are you?
Hi, good evening.
Good. If you could just state your name for the record, are you Kenneth?
Yeah, Ken Maroya.
Thank you. And if you could just tell us a little bit about Coffee Roasters?
Yeah, I have two, I have another business in West Kingston, and this is a new location up at URI.
And did you want to talk about hours of operation or?
It's basically from six to nine up there.
Six in the morning.
Six in the morning until nine and evening.
Yep. Monday through, seven days a week?
Just seven days, yeah.
Just seven.
Just seven days, you want it to be eight.
Eight days.
And do we have questions here at the town council table?
Do you own the TLC and Bonetchores also?
Yes, that's where I roast coffee.
Oh.
You can't roast coffee in South Kingston, you have to be in an industrial zone.
Oh, really?
I never knew that either.
Learn something all the time.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yes, who's currently in Unit 2 up there? Who's space, who's there right now?
What would be Unit 2, is that?
That's you.
That's you.
Oh, who is currently in there?
Yeah.
No, who before you?
Oh, who before? Oh, P. King Market, I think?
P. King Market.
P. King Market.
Yeah, I don't know. Boy, all right, something new all the time.
Other questions?
They were closed for a while, I don't know when they were last there, but it's quite a while ago.
So, you roast your coffee in Bonnet Chores and you bring it down to URI?
Yeah, to URI and to 138.
Everybody, I mean, your one in Bonnet Chores is great.
Oh, thank you.
So, good luck.
Oh, thanks.
Any other questions? Do you have other items on the menu besides coffee, like sandwiches or snacks?
Yes, what else would you like?
Well, you have the cameras.
We bake fresh scones every morning and, you know.
Fresh scones.
Some regular sandwiches, you know.
All right, well, the TV cameras are running, so you can do some advertising there for your business.
I would have brought some help with me if I had known.
All right. So, any other questions?
Seeing none, then I move approval of Resolution A and the licenses.
Second.
We have motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, we wish you the best of luck, Kenneth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to a proposed amendment to the Town Code, Chapter 17, Taxation, as follows, Chapter 17, Taxation, Article 1 in general, and we are going to add Section 17-6, Elks Lodge Exemption pursuant to Chapter 385 of the Public Laws, January Session 1989. The town council hereby exempts from taxation all the real, mixed, and personal property of the South Kingston Elks Lodge, 1899, BPOE, which stands for Best People on Earth, incorporated on May 17, 1953, so long as it shall be used for the purpose for which said, "Corporation Was Incorporated", and this ordinance shall take effect upon passage. And I'll start with Steve, and then I will defer to the Elks.
On December 14, the council received a letter in 2012 requesting that the town council consider providing a property tax exemption to the Elks Lodge 1899. Subsequent to the receipt of that letter and at the direction of the council, Slistre and I met with representatives of the Elks on two occasions. The discussions were whether the Elks wished to seek a full tax exemption or to develop with the town staff a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. It's important to note that back in 1989, the General Assembly through Public Laws approved a statute which provided the authority through ordinance for the South Kingston Council to provide exemption to the Elks Lodge. There was really no knowledge of the existence of that public law until last year, and we've received the application. After the two meetings that we had, representatives from the Elks indicated that they would like an opportunity to come before the council and request the full exemption. I've provided the council with a, an assessment value associated with all property currently owned by the Lodge. Land values amount to $224,600, building value is in at $489,100, and the tangible properties or equipment is valued at $20,000. So, there's a total during the current tax year of $733,700, on which the Elks Club does pay property tax at a rate of $14.51. Their tax bill for the current year was $10,689.38. Should the council provide approval of the exemption that is sought this evening, it would go into effect with the assessment year as of December 31 of 2012 for the tax bills that would be issued by the town based on the June 15, 2013 certification for collection during the 2013-2014 year. So, the actions requested for this evening do not affect the current tax bill, but would provide the council with the authority to be able to remove that taxable value from the role that is certified as of June 15 of 2013, based on the ownerships as of December 31 of 2012. I'd also note that the preliminary estimate as far as the revale company would see that the values for next year would actually be increasing to $737,900. We would suspect that with the revale in place, the rate, instead of being at the 1450, would probably be at the, an equalized rate would be probably in the 1540 or 90 cent increase. So, that tax bill of 10.6 would probably exceed, or be closer to 10.9, were the tax exemption not provided as requested. I know that the representatives of the Elks are here tonight, hopefully they too have brought cookies to impress the council. And with that, I'd yield the floor to Bill, the Exalted Ruler of the Elks, for comments.
Thank you, Steve.
Welcome, Bill.
Hi, Ella, good evening. My name's Bill DeCesare, and I am the current Exalted Ruler at Elks Lodge 1899 here in town. We thought we would begin by giving you the information as to what the Elks are, the same information we give to our new members at our indoctrination meetings, if I may. The Menvalent and Protective Order of Elks is a nationwide organization whose membership over 13 decades has consisted of tens of millions of America's finest citizens. We love our country and desire to preserve its cherished institutions, traditions, and values, respect our neighbors, and constantly seek to promote their well-being, and love and enjoy life, and believe this enjoyment is increased by sharing it with family, friends, and with all with whom we come in contact. We seek to bring into our family only those who delight in wholesome associations with congenial companions, who possess a deep sense of patriotism, fair play, and dedication to noble causes, persons who find the fulfillment of their existence in service to humanity, feeding the hungry, sheltering the homeless, aiding those in distress, and providing themselves to be true friends to all in need. We question no one's religion, nor do we exclude anyone because of creed, race, ethnic origin, educational attainment, vocation, material status, or physical stature. We measure character by what one is and does, not by titles or position. We do not ask you to change any beliefs, nor interfere with your personal life, nor act contrary to the dictates of conscience. In fact, we encourage you to put your personal beliefs into practice more strongly in these areas. Your association wants you to enjoy life more by becoming a better American and humanitarian. We have now approximately 700 members, almost all of them from the South County area. Actually, most of them are just local to Wakefield. We, in the past year, the last year we have records for, donated in excess of $60,000 in charitable giving locally. Elks nationally last year gave over $350 million in charitable giving. If someone's writing that down, I'll repeat it, $350 million in charitable giving. Elks give more to our veterans than the American Legion and the VFW combined. We give more scholarships to students in need in America than anyone except the federal government. Elks are an asset to any community, and I believe especially here. Should we receive this exemption, we would not use that to put in the bank, quite the contrary. That would add to our charitable giving. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Questions here at the table? Meg?
My question is, I've been to the Elks booth for events that you have had and that for, you know, the rental space of the hall for the outside public, but my question is more directed to, I'm happy to see that you have such a large membership exclusively in the population here within town. Do you continue to see that membership growing at a greater percentage every year?
Yes, I do, actually, joining us tonight is the Chairman of Membership. We can give specific questions to Dick to answer. But we are the fastest-growing lodge in Area 1 in Elkdom. That encompasses all of New England and New York State. We received the Area 1 Award last year for the greatest percentage increase in membership, and during my term, which ends in two weeks, during my term this year, we added 101 new members to the Elks.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Other questions here at the table?
I know you do a great job, I mean, that's, I know many Elks, I should become one, and, but you do a great job for, you know, the community, so I'll have to say.
Thank you, Paul, I brought in membership applications for the entire council.
See, we didn't need the cookies, did we?
Is it all signed? Because when Billy Forbes gives it out, he's got it all signed and everything, it's.
Bill, we try not to talk about Billy, actually. He's an honored member, but we keep him quiet.
He took a ride down to the beach one day, and I said, oh God, somebody keeps asking me for an application, you know, to join the Elks, and he went, well, just so happens, and he pulls it out of his back pocket, it's all signed, it's all filled out. So, I'm sure he's going to give that to you at the end of the meeting, Paul. Other questions here at the table?
No, I think you've said it all, it's great dissertation, anyway, good organization.
Thank you.
Great for the community.
Do you want to mention any future programs that you have? I know there's a fundraiser coming up for.
I would, actually, yes, and for that, if I could have Ken Kennerson, I'm sure it's familiar to the council, come up and speak to what's in the immediate future.
Good evening, Ken Kennerson, I'm a lodge member, I serve on the Audit Committee, I serve on the lodge's Charity Committee, and also am fairly active on various charity events that we have throughout the year. We really have three sources of funding that we try and achieve for charity purposes. One is through our general revenue accounts, where we actually budget in our general revenue for various charities within our community. These are generally smaller-type community, charity events. Then we'll have a second, which is an event that is specifically for a charity. Example would be our Heating Assistance Program, where we actually have a couple of events every year, and the fishermen down at Galilee are in partnership with us in having those events, and we do wonderful on that. We also have another example of an event is what we call our 2525 Charity Club, where we sell tickets for drawings 25 weeks out of the year. We have grand prizes banquet at the end. We net maybe $6,500, $7,000 through that event, and we have that as a dedicated fund, so that all those resources go only for local charities. And the third, and I'm going to come back to some of the things that we're currently looking at to support some of local charities from those funding streams. The third, where we're really providing a lot of focus is on external funding streams, and what I mean by that is grants, both state grants, national grants. We just recently received grant approval from the national level, not huge amount of money, but it's $2,000, and what we're going to do with that is that we are entering into a partnership with South County Community Action, and we are going to send underprivileged children in our community to Alton Jones Day Campus for the summer camp. So, we're really looking to do that. There's another grant that we're going to be applying for that is, we can apply June 1 for the same sort of thing, where we hope to use those resources if approved to send underprivileged children to winter day camp at Alton Jones for the spring break. In addition to that, you may have seen in The Independent recently, where we've provided funding for the Home for Hero on Old North Road up at URI, which was payment for the home for a disabled veteran that's going to be housed in that house, which happens to be affordable housing unit, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to visit those four homes. I happen to be familiar with it from another committee that I'm on, and it's really, it's a great project that's gone forward. In addition to that, we've recently also made a contribution to a very interesting program, it's called Work Camps. And this is a program where we're going to have 50 students, young students, like 14, 15, 16 years old, coming from out of state. They're going to be housed at Chairhoe High School. And what they do for one week is they come in, they have 50 separate assignments, for work assignments, for the disabled, senior citizens, and low-income that can't afford to do repairs on their home or their landscaping. So, we made a contribution to purchase the supplies necessary in order to complete that. We have students here that do exactly the same thing, but they go out of state. So, that's sort of an example of some of the things that we're currently involved in and what we're looking for towards in the future. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other questions? That's just a sample of the good work that goes on. Did you want to introduce the rest of your members here?
Yes, I would. On the end is our new Elk of the Year and my Chief of Staff, Al Early. Next to him is John Foreman, a previous Exalted Ruler and the current chairperson for the Board of Trustees. Next to him is Jeff Robert, a previous Exalted Ruler, who is taking my place, April 1 this year, to guide the lodge for a year. Ken Kennerson, you've met, and in the back is Dick Clark, who is a longtime Elk, a huge asset to the lodge, and Chairman of Membership.
Thank you. Okay, before I open it to any questions for the public, do we have any more questions here at the town council table? Jim?
Oh, no, just appreciate learning, I think very few people in the community realize just to the extent of the charitable giving by your organization, not only locally but nationally. So, thank you for sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time, Ella.
Thanks, Bill. With that said, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the microphone if there's anyone who would like to come and comment. Any public comments? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to pass the ordinance, Section 17-6, called the Elks Lodge Exemption as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
It says upon passage, but this will be effective for certification on June 15 of 2013.
Can I just ask one question, Steve, does that, so that means that they will pay the 2012 tax assessment or not?
They are, they have already paid, they will be paying for the current year. The tax bills that go out in July, they would not receive a tax bill.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure.
So, we have a motion and a second, any further questions, discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, we wish you the best of luck, and it's an honor and a privilege
Thank you.
to be an Elk.
I'm going to leave the application. I also have 2525 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Gentlemen.
Thanks for coming.
Good night, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Communication B. Next item on the agenda is Communication B. This is a resolution adopted February 13th, 2013, by the Newport City Council requesting the General Assembly to amend Rhode Island General Law 3-7-6 to eliminate the dollar amount that a local licensing authority may impose for advertising and administrative costs related to processing liquor license renewal applications, so that a fee that more accurately reflects the cost may be assessed as received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discuss this at the work session, and I move that we support this resolution as presented by the Newport City Council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication Item C is a resolution adopted February 13th, 2013, by the Newport City Council, February 25th, 2013, by the Charlestown Town Council, in support of gun safety efforts. I receive placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We also discuss this at the work session, although we're certainly all in support of gun safety. I believe at this time we'll place it on file because we have further questions as to what the resolution was presenting us with.
Thank you.
I concur, and I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication Item D from Leo J. Massey dated February 25th, 2013, requesting certificates of recognition for Nicholas Given, Jonathan F. Massey, and Christopher W. Burke of Troop 1 Kingston for attaining the Eagle Scout Award is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discuss this at the work session, and we'd like to invite them to receive their award here at the council. So, I guess, Dale, do you usually send them a letter?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's what I move that we do. We obviously are in support of this communication.
And you have all of the information to include in the proclamation?
They're done. Oh, she's way ahead of us.
I'll be there to sign them.
I second the motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Carol. And Communication E is a resolution adopted February 25th by the Charlestown Town Council and a communication dated March 7, 2013, from Abel Collins, providing a draft resolution in support of legislation to repeal Rhode Island General Law 17-19-15, potty levers that provides for master lever voting. I receive placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Well, we discuss this at the work session, and I move that we place it on file. Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication F is a resolution adopted February 25th, 2013, by the Charlestown Town Council in support of the Streetlight Reform Program legislation proposed by the Washington County Regional Planning Council is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discuss this at the work session, and we'd like to, we'd like more information for the study. Certainly, if it represents a savings to the taxpayers, we'd be more than interested. I don't think we know the answers to those questions. So, Steve, I guess we'll refer it to you and to John Schrock for further study. And we'll hear from you guys at a later date.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. And I will be bringing back, there is the Washington County Regional Planning Council meeting on Wednesday at 8:30 at Kettle Pond, so I'll be bringing this information to that meeting. And further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication G is a communication dated February 28th, 2013, from Frank Di Gregorio, Common Cause Rhode Island, requesting support for joint Senate and House resolutions. Senate 0337 and House 5498, that would allow putting before the Assembly, the voters, a constitutional amendment to again include the Rhode Island General Assembly under the jurisdiction of the Rhode Island Ethics Commission is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
I move that we support this communication as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication H dated February 26th, 2013, from Joe Bianco and Frank Tassoni, Mary Carpenter's homeowners incorporated, the homeowners association of Carpenter's Beach Meadow, seeking support for their opposition to a section of Senate Bill 2013, -Senate 342, an act relating to property leased land dwellings that would exclude seasonal leased land owners from protection regarding the right of the first refusal. And rent increases for leased land are received, placed on file, and the town council further If anyone is here to speak on this, we would encourage them to come to the microphone at this time.
Well, we discuss this at the work session again, another many communication, and we decided to place this on file.
And...
That's the motion I make.
Okay. And if it comes to a hearing, then it will come back later on?
Certainly can bring it back. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Jim?
Yeah, I really need to be on a learning curve with this thing. I'm just not happy with any of the combinations here from the legislation submitted to, I just don't know enough about what's happening in our local community. I understand Roy Carpenter's, I understand Mary Carpenter's. Where's Wacamo fall in this? Where's the Village of Warren Pond fall in this? I have too many questions here. And I guess I'm also very much a property rights person, and this, this whole bill has bothered me from its introduction years and years and years ago. So I'm just going to vote against it.
I think we'll place it on file, Jim.
Yeah, we're putting it on file, but I just think it should be discussed and really tackled.
Can I?
Yeah, can we just talk about this a little bit? So, I'm not sure how that works with your vote, but Carol?
I think we need to know what are the parks in South Kingstown that are affected. Obviously, this bill doesn't affect the seasonal parks. They're exempt. Are there non-seasonal leased land dwellings that would be affected by this bill? I think that's the question that we may have, that we don't know. They exempted the seasonal, which we know, I think Jim just mentioned several of them.
I can't answer your question as far as this legislation is concerned. Which ones would, the questions that were raised were by the seasonal parks that had the specific exclusion within the act. Whether or not this affects any of the properties in South Kingstown, I'm not sure what the definitions are.
Right. Did you want us to try to find out those, the answers to those questions, Jim, and bring it back?
Maybe I'll keep working on it, but it's just, I just don't like any part of the bill that's currently there. I don't like this.
So if we vote to place it on file, you'll vote against that? And do you want to make another motion that you'll vote against it? Or do you just want to...
I just wanted to show my...
So you'll make a statement at the end? All right.
I have to say, I'm not in support of the bill either. I mean, placing it on file means we're just...
Going to gain a little more information.
We're not, we're not going to deal with it. I mean, we're not supporting it.
You know, we have so many leased land places around here. You know, we have Kenyans in Jerusalem, Naragansett, Cherry Brown Farms is leased land, but now they're shareholder ownership. I, you know, there's so much going on here. I really need to get an education on this, so I can't join the opposition here because I really need, I need education. So I'm just, that's my, and I'll have to probably do it on my own. I want to, I want the planning board to spend months on this. I'm just going to have to undertake it myself.
Okay. So I think what I hear you say is for us to move forward, and then you'll do some work, and I'm sure we'll, you'll bring something back.
We're not supporting anybody in the, in their opposition, and we're not supporting the bill.
We're not placing it on file.
Okay.
But Jim will go out and do further work, and if he wants to come back with a, maybe a letter, you know, strongly vehemently opposed to this, then Jim will do that in the future. That's what I hear you saying, right?
Yes.
But I am opposed to the legislation too. So should I join Jim? Or should we just place it on file? I mean, this is unusual, isn't it?
It is.
We usually either support it...
I think there are a number of questions out there that people have, so I think we answer those questions, then we can, then you can have a really informed opinion, say, yes, up or down, that kind of thing.
I agree. I can't say that I approve or disapprove of this based on the fact that I have a lot of questions, only because I am very familiar with leased land concepts. So I would like to get more information, and I appreciate your taking the task investigative for the, Jim. But I don't think that we can make a truly educated decision on this tonight based on what has been presented to us in our packet.
Well, I'm going to support placing it on file, and if Jim comes with further information, we're going to bring it back to the table.
Yep.
Guaranteed.
That's great.
So did we have a second on that, Carol's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have Carol's motion to place it on file. And we have heard from other town council members. Any further discussion before we vote?
I just want to say one more thing. I think the fact that we're placing it on file shows a certain amount of lack of support for the entire bill. That's my understanding. So, I, okay, that's it?
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Four, one, zero. Okay. Which brings us to Communication I. This is a communication dated February 26th, 2013, from Doug Brady, general manager Holiday Inn South Kingstown, expressing concern with rules and regulations proposed by the Rhode Island Public Utilities Commission and the Division of Public Utilities and carriers pertaining to public plate vehicle owners is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. And I know, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and I know that we do have Doug Brady here in the audience.
I think we best have brought him up.
Yeah.
I'm giving you the memorandum, which talks about what PUC has prepared and published regulations. For the regulations we want to be going to here, I think the question is whether or not the council is supportive of the position that Mr. Brady has expressed in terms of expressing concern that this would have adverse impact on home business. And for that, I think that you'll return to 25.
Welcome, Doug.
Hi, thank you for having us. We also have Chuck. Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the name. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
His name?
Chuck.
Yeah, my name is Charles Okumian. I'm the owner of Airline Express Limousine and Car Service. We've been incorporated since 2000, been in the business over 16 years. We're asking the town council tonight to please send a letter prior to March 21st of this year to the PUC and to fellow state officials, asking the PUC to remove sections C8 and C9 of the draft of a docket number 13MC-08, and that the consideration of these sections will cause economic hardship and undue burden on South County, small businesses, and the general public.
I have, I'm not sure if you can accept it now, but I have several packets. It has information from the local chambers. State Senate is all in opposition of this section, C8 and 9. Basically, C8 and 9 will require anybody putting a limo or anything with a public plate in service must be three years or newer. So at that point right there, you're going to eliminate and cause great hardship on many businesses who have public plates. You won't be able to run unless it's three years. And to physically expect a business after three years to be replacing things such as limos or any type of vehicle is really, my own opinion, is a little far out there. Now, in conversations with the people at the PUC, they're intent saying that, oh, if you already have your vehicle in service, you don't have to replace it. This is just if you're putting your vehicle in the first time into service. But they don't specify what's in service now. Is that considered the first time? Or anything of what's existing or what is being brought into service? They don't specify, and it's very vague and clear. Other things they say is if you're a 25-year-old vehicle, you can apply for a waiver. There is no checklist from the PUC, which I've asked for, saying what is required to do to get this waiver. An inspector will come out and make his decision. It is final. It's not appealable. If he comes out and says you have a dent in your car, I'm not going to allow it, you cannot replace it and then appeal back, from my conversations with them. It's just the part about if your vehicle hits 300,000 miles, most vehicles can easily achieve that within a 25-year lifespan easily. And you cannot replace the engine in this vehicle. You can have a pristine Rolls Royce, 25 years or older, but you, if it hits 300,000, it comes off the road, period. You cannot replace the engine. You cannot do any upgrades. It's just amazing, the thing that small businesses such as limos, obviously in dealing with trolleys, which I've done through the town, even the Holiday Inn, we're considering trying to do again some type of shuttle service from the hotel to two spots downtown, just a back-and-forth thing. We cannot do it because we would not physically have a new enough vehicle or within their guidelines. And this isn't just with limos, it's anybody who has a public plate. Any type of shuttle service, if you have other hotels that have public plates, anything that's regulated by the PUC, this is their draft they're proposing, and we're just saying, we have no problem with mandating a minimum charge for limos and stuff. That's never been the issue. But saying your vehicle has to be three years or newer every time is just, it's just amazing. If you normally replace your fleet at, say you have eight or 10-year-old vehicles, 150,000 miles, who cares? You say, I want to replace it. You have to replace it with a three-year newer vehicle. You cannot go down south or anywhere and say, I got a great deal on a five-year-old stretch limo with 50,000 miles. It's never been driven. You cannot put that into place. It was asked of Mr. Mercia, which I was not present, so we're just going to say it was told. What if a company buys out another limo company? ABC buys XYZ. If their vehicles are over four years, what do you do? And his response was, a case could be made, you could keep those vehicles on the road. Well, who's going to buy a company on a case could be made with no checklist? Nothing whatsoever saying, you follow this, I will give you an exemption. You're a 24-year-old, 25-year-old vehicle, here's your checklist. Check all this off, give it to me, I'll look at it, you pass. Nothing. It is all at their discretion. And if you own a company and you're thinking of getting out of the business, age, or just want, your company has now gone to almost zero value. And of course, this other point is you're going to force people in Rhode Island to go out of state. There isn't, these rules do not apply, from what I understand in conversation. If you're a Massachusetts-based company or Connecticut, which there are quite a few doing business in Rhode Island, you don't have to abide by these laws or this draft or when it becomes a rule or regulation.
One other thing, too. As we all know, Lincoln is the car of choice for, the black car service is called, not a stretch limo, but they do stretch them. And they don't make them anymore. Two years ago, they stopped. However, we have customers, high-end customers that live here in South County, South Kingstown, that demand these cars and want these cars. They love them, they like the way they ride. We can find these vehicles, five, six years old, with 20, 30,000 miles, and they're pristine. Can't put them on. You cannot buy that. And it's going to do undue hardship on us to go out and buy these new cars, the new Cadillacs that are $50,000, $60,000 every three. We can't do it. We just can't afford it. Companies, I've heard, are ready to move right to Massachusetts right now. Then they will not collect the sales tax for Rhode Island. They're not obligated to, which we have to now under the new state law. Transportation, we have to collect 7%. They will lose the corporate tax on the corporations, they're going to lose all the registrations on these vehicles. And it's just something, we don't know why and what happened, but...
And this has nothing to do with the inspection process itself. That still remains the same. This has absolutely nothing to do with it. You have, the state has a very rigorous inspection process for public plates, buses, et cetera. So this draft, and particularly this section, is just mind-boggling.
Questions here at the table? I think Carol and then Jim?
Well, I agree with Doug and Chuck. I mean, it is mind-boggling. And with the inspection service that they have, are they saying they can't rely on their own inspections? I mean...
That's, that's a good question.
It's a contradiction.
These vehicles are inspected yearly. Four inspectors inspect the vehicle at the public garage in Providence. They measure tolerances, they measure rotors, I mean, they're very critical.
Oh, yeah.
They're poking, would see if there's any body rot. They have to be because we're driving the public.
Right.
That's why they have public plates on them. We just brought a Lincoln down there with 390,000. They went through that thing, and they turned, and they said, this car is perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. We have to. We're interstate too. We do interstate travel. That car's going to be ready to go.[1786.16] That car's going to be ready to go, if you call for your family to go to New York, that car's going to be perfect. And we take a lot of pride, a lot of money we put into these vehicles to keep them that way. We're not taxis, we don't beat on the cars, these cars are professional vehicles.
And it's in your best interest to have a safe vehicle, obviously. I mean, what would be your interest in not being safe?
Part of their proposal, you know, as far as the docket, the 13MC-08, is to establish a minimum charge to help distinguish between taxi cab and limo services or public plate owners. And that was required by the state legislature when they enacted this, saying, establish a minimum charge. Now, they're saying, you know, they're finally getting to that point to do it. It's been, you know, a year later, now they've gone beyond that and said, we're going to dictate what type of vehicles. The state process of inspection will dictate whether your vehicle can be on the road. Why they're trying to say, we should be saying what your vehicle looks like or the age of it is, is my, again, mind-boggling because if you have some of these old classics that are out there, and particularly like I said with trolleys and stuff, I could not rip out an engine and put in a new engine, they will not allow it. It hit 300,000 miles, it's done. I'd have to go and sell it somewhere, out of state of course, who, nobody here would buy it. Or, if I was in Massachusetts, there is no such regulation like this, nor is there in Connecticut, none of the surrounding states have this. So, I can move a company in Massachusetts, use the exact same vehicle, all it is required of the PUC is to show, you know, from understanding and discussion with them, is that you're going to do business in Rhode Island, you're fit and able. So, I can take that same vehicle, go out of state, and I do not have to pay state taxes anymore. You're not going to get the taxes from the business. And this is just not, of course, not just South County, it's the whole state. Tourism, the impact, we can't even get, you know, cab service is difficult, is enough to get the Amtrak to the hotels. You have services that bring it, bring guests to our hotels or our higher-end clients in the business aspect, they will not, what price will they be paying to go from Amtrak to the hotel if you're pushing the smaller businesses out because they can't afford to buy these three-year newer vehicles? So, as it, it just, I cannot comprehend and I, there is an open hearing, we're going to try to obviously get as many people we can on March 21st. So, I mean, we're just looking for the town council to say, you know, some, this just, somebody, this doesn't seem right.
And your costs would have to be adjusted onto the, your clients. I mean, we're talking about kids going to proms, all of that stuff, so...
Exactly.
Your rates would have to increase, obviously.
Without doubt. And the convention centers, Providence, that whole area, there's only going to be a hint, there's what, 28 maybe odd limo companies actually in the state? But how many of those are going to be able to survive? Even if you grandfathered their purpose of saying, we're going to grandfather these other vehicles in, they're still going to eventually hit the mileage or just not be usable. You're going to be forced at some point, no matter what, to be, have to replace your cars with three years or newer. How many people are going to actually be able to do that? Of small businesses, small limo companies of three or four cars? They're not going to be able to.
It sounds like they might grandfather them in.
Well, that's the question.
It's not necessarily they're going to grandfather them, they might.
They might.
So, if you, I've been to many a wedding, they have a classic car, that classic car's been in service three years, even though it's 40 years old, it's going to be out of service. Doesn't make any sense.
They might, that's what, you know, the point of, with Mr. Mercer saying, well, that's not the point, my intent is this, well, that's not what's written in your draft. Your draft doesn't say, if you currently have vehicles, you can keep them as a grandfather clause. It just says this, and which I believe you all have a copy of it, in the Section C8.
He told us basically, there is no good, there is no good, there is not going to be any grandfathering in. He told us that.
There is a deposition that Mr. Mercer himself had done, which, again, I'm not sure if you can accept it, but I have the packets with all that and if you can want to review it with the letters from the other chambers, asking him about, you know, how will this affect businesses? And being under the public utility carriers, they don't have to take that into effect, motor carriers. That is not part of their decision process and it clearly states on his opening where it says there's a meeting, that they do not have to consider that as an impact or not. That's not their charter or whatever it may be you want to use. It's mind-boggling.
Thank you, Jim?
Almost set.
Meg?
Thank you. And not only do I hear what you're saying, I also support what you're saying because it does seem ludicrous, a three-year stipulation. But I'm trying to look at the big picture and conceptualize this. It doesn't just affect you, it affects shuttle services to the other businesses and the people that are hiring you. So, it doesn't have a specific economic impacts on just, I mean, certainly it does affect you, but it affects the services to the people that you're transporting to as well.
Without doubt.
So, I think that's, I mean, you did speak to that, but I think that's another important point to consider in your presentation on the 21st or, you know, when this moves forward because it has a ripple effect. And, you know, we need to be concerned about that because Rhode Island needs to, no doubt, grow economically. I mean, it's talked about every day, but this just stymies the potential to do that.
Such as when we did do the town trolley type thing for that experiment, I mean, we hired eight employees, we put a minimum, the cost back into South County, everything was local, was 40-something thousand dollars in product, gasoline, all local hiring. So, that, you know, all that's wiped away, shuttle services wiped away, the people you would hire to do the shuttle service. And not to say, when this takes effect, what do you do with all these people you currently have booked for functions? What do you do with all these weddings and brides and all that?
Right, exactly.
When the law, this, this C8 is so vague and uninterpreted, I just am baffled by it. But then now you get into, is it vetted? Is it even legal? You know, you're interfering, you know, there is the, obviously the Commerce Clause of the federal government with interstate, but it also says in the Commerce Clause, which it doesn't get involved with intrastate from point A to B in Rhode Island, but when A to B in Rhode Island affects interstate travel, they can now step in and start mandating some laws. So, now you're into a whole new can of worms here. I mean, just, I mean, the hotel itself, we want to do a shuttle service, get them down, get them down here. We're thinking this year, using similar like a trolley or whatever, to get them and drop them a couple of spots at the mall and a couple of spots downtown, totally different than previous, but cannot do it because the vehicle is not going to be young enough. When it's placed into service, will be long after, you know, once the summer begins. So, now it's going to be over three years, so now that vehicle's no longer in service and the mileage factor.
Even, even limousines, by the time you buy a $90,000 limousine, it's already a year old. By the time that car is shipped to the coach manufacturer, it takes about maybe three to four months there, another three, four months shipping, registering. We just bought a new bus, it was almost eight months old, by the time we got it, it was brand new. By the time you get it, it's almost a year old to top it off. You can pick up beautiful, beautiful, pristine cars that are five, six, seven years old for like 15, 16,000, whereas if you're forced to buy a three-year-old vehicle, it's costing the operators upwards from 40, 50, 60,000 sometimes for a three-year-old car with low mileage. And that's the other thing, you've got to watch the mileage because if you buy it under three years and as soon as that car hits 300,000, it's gone. It doesn't make sense.
I mean, like I said, the tourism impact, what are they going to be paying for shuttle service? When there's very few companies that can actually survive this ordeal of the three-year process or 300,000 to replace them, what are the, they're going to be paying to go shuttle other than a taxi cab, but if you want to get picked up at Amtrak, whatever? Brides and all their parties, which, you know, we do a ton of, you know, group weddings and everything, the Kinnibungal, wherever it may be, what are they now going to pay to be able to get from their bridal party or group so they're not driving and enjoying themselves and no, you know, drinking, driving, that type of stuff, hence why they hire a shuttle service? What will they end up paying for that type of service? It's, it could be anything, there's no cap, of course, so now it's going to be law and supply and demand. You've got two companies, we're going to dictate whatever price we want because where else are you going to go? Out of state will suddenly come flooding in, Massachusetts and Connecticut, which do majority, you know, the Wesley area and stuff, now they're going to come in and be able to say, well, I'll offer you this price, I pay no sales tax and I pay no business tax. I don't pay taxes at all. So, we're just at, we're in process of review, to review this. If you want the packets, I'm more than happy to give them to you so you can see the other chambers and their comments and the local senators. And just something to say, you know, we want you to revisit this, we want you, eliminate it for now and really vet that process out. Don't just automatically have a hearing. When they have the hearing, commission decides, it's it, doesn't go to the general assembly. This is it. General assembly gave them the authority, we've made the decision, here's our vote, that's our new draft and rule. Well, not draft, but that's our new rules and regulations. So, it's not like you can even go to the general assembly and say, geez, you know, could we, you know, we want to have, you know, this fully vetted through them. Can't happen. So, we're just asking if somebody from the town council would please be willing to write some type of letter or something inquiry with the PUC to try to ask them to please clarify what exactly are you referring to?
Oh, we'll just oppose it altogether.
Oh, I would like to.
But anyway, Doug and Chuck, you said C8, which I have the language for C8, what was C9? I thought I heard somebody say C9.
C9 deals with the same thing as far as classifying sedans and stuff based on three-year, 300,000.
Oh, okay.
Everything they're doing is trying to say, every vehicle must be three years, 300,000. And that's just extension of defining what an SUV must be, four doors and this, but again, three-year, 300,000.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Or minivan or something like that. I'm not sure if you want these packets, if you can accept them or not.
I don't know if we need them, but you've got them, we'll take them if you want.
If you could give them to the town clerk, that would be great. Thanks, Doug. Chuck?
Is the draft regulations, Chairman Mercer's affidavit and his testimony as far as the letters from the government, their answer chamber, municipal chamber, or Franklin Chamber, all those in our position? As well as there is a, we had a meeting at the hotel today for every limo companies, which quite a few showed up, to try to coordinate how to, when we have them, when they have the open hearing in March, how to address it. And of course, they will only accept written testimony. You can only, you can't just go and talk and they'll say, okay, it's accepted, you must write it, send it, you can talk, but unless it's written and they received it. So, we had that meeting today trying to coordinate everybody on some bullet points and stuff like that.
I received a few phone calls from the Chamber of Commerce, Elizabeth Berman, and also had a conversation with Larry Fish. So, other questions here at the table? Jim?
Just seems as though, you know, last year at this time, we were fending off the attack on the economy and our tourism industry and once again, it's under a different cloud, but still surfaces again. So, I appreciate your work on this because this could have easily gone unnoticed and unchallenged and...
We can stop it, that's all.
We hope so.
I know.
Like I said, the draft itself, nobody's against the minimum charge, everybody wants that, the limo companies all are in favor of that, but it's just that whole, where did it come from? What's the reasoning? When we ask, what is the reasoning of this? Why did you throw this in? And nobody's gotten a clear answer.
Nope.
And you, no way, we'll get an answer, I don't...
Because they can.
I'm sorry?
Do you see this with your state that they are destroying the three years?
No, no other, no other state, I just, I mean, we checked locally, I didn't go across country.
I pulled, I pulled the statutes for Connecticut, Massachusetts, they do not have any regulation on age or mileage. Connecticut has a very, very strict inspection process, is, ours is even more stricter. They have what they call rolling inspections where the P, the DOT can be on the road and can pull over any Connecticut livery or public plate like we have, they're called liveries in Connecticut. Anytime, anywhere, like pull them into a parking lot and do a complete inspection right there. They do that all the time. But other than that, there's no regulation, the insurance process that we have to maintain a million and a half dollars on your, every vehicle, Massachusetts only has a million and Connecticut has a million and a half, but they can undercut us if we have forced, like, like everybody said here, to buy newer vehicles, we have to increase the fees, of course, to cover these vehicles. And you can't buy a vehicle every three years in this business, it's impossible. But it would be an undue burden upon the public and the operators, that would, this fee would have to be passed upon if we do. And then therefore, Connecticut and Mass would just come in and undercut us and take all the business and they don't have to collect any sales tax and they don't have to, they don't have to, any of you'll be taking your business elsewhere.
I mean, again, this doesn't apply just for limos, it's anybody who has a public plate. And if, it could be, you know, there's nursing homes that do a lot of shuttling of people, you know, assisted living places, all those folks are going to be affected by this. I mean, we're doing the grassroots efforts through, you know, the chambers and stuff to get the information out, but it's just, you know, we're just trying to get as much as we can over to them to say, you know, really rethink this part. The other part, nobody has a problem with, everybody agrees with it, just this section, you know, delete it for now and really vet it out and discuss it with companies, not just limos, but maybe with other, you know, hotels that have shuttle services. Just get a good, good vetting of this process. It's mind-boggling. My 10-year-old vehicle is good, but if I want to put another one, it must be three years old, but your 10-year-old, 15-year-old is fine. It could be 40 years old if you have less than 300,000 miles, well, that's okay, but you can't put anything newer. You can't, you know...
How are you going to get to the 40 years? How are you going to get to the 25-year classic or antique if you can take it off the road?
Well, that's the question. You look at something like a trolley that can be easily hit 25 years because of its design, there are many designs, but, you know, he'll come out and you're at their whim. You don't have, again, there's no checklist to say, I will give you an extension for this 25-year process if you follow A, B, and C. There's none of that. It is solely, well, they'll come out and we'll decide. I ask them, how do you decide this? It's internal. Is there an appeal? Well, that would be internal, we'll discuss it. Great. How do you run a business and say, I'm going to buy something, yet it's all on, we'll discuss it, it's internal? Well, I don't have a checklist for you. Oop, you had a dent, I'm not going to give it to you. Well, can I appeal it? No. Bye. What do I do? Have a good life, see you later, you know, it's going to force you, it's going to force you out of state.
Doug, you, you are the best fighter for this issue. With all of that said, I'm going to move that we send a letter in support of Doug Brady and opposing the proposed regulations by the Rhode Island Public Utilities Commission as it relates to, what do you call the, the public, public plate?
Public plates, right.
Okay. Everything he just said, Dale.
I mean, my point, my thing was to, to get as many, my, my point was to get as many people to even look at this, to tell me, am I crazy? Am I reading it wrong? And I've asked, you know, we've gone, that's why I went to every chamber, we went to down south, everywhere, somebody else look at it, maybe I'm, maybe I'm a little...
We consulted with two attorneys and they read it the same way, so...
So, you sit there and you're like, so, I mean, it's not like I'm asking to be, you know, not to review it yourself and really say, you know, he's nuts, he's reading this wrong, or what he says is right, this has potential to happen, now we would like to say, we go on record and oppose it. So, I want to make sure you fully, you know, read and understand that I'm just not out in the cloud left.
You've done a great job, really. You both have.
I agree. I mean, it can be interpreted too many different ways and too vague, but it will put a lot of people out of business and a lot will leave this state and still do business in the state.
Well, you have our full support. We have a second?
I'm seconding Carol's motion.
The other thing to do is also, in addition to the specific questions, I think there needs to be also a request as to why no festival was implied in this, like, because the festival is necessary for them to be able to complain what impact it will have on business. For them to simply say that there is, that there is no impact makes no sense at all.
Well, as, as a public utility, they don't have to consider that.
We're considered utilities, we are not businesses, by the way, because our license says public utility commission. We are considered a utility. We don't, we have no economic hardship on us and he doesn't care about that.
Mm-hmm.
For a state official to say something like that with the economy the way it is and people wanting to come into this state, if he worked for me, he wouldn't be lasting too long. I tell you right now.
says in the paragraph below that you would not view, we do not view you, in paraphrasing, of course, you're not a business, so we don't have to worry about the impact. And again, in an economy that's such a way it is, Ripton's talking about cutting out stops and all that, yet now you're, you know, everybody thinks it's a limo thing that, oh, who cares, everybody can afford a limo. It's not just a limo thing, it's the shuttle thing, it's the hotel shuttles, I can't do a shuttle from the hotel now. Airport shuttles.
Airport shuttles.
Is there anything stronger than a letter we can send? Or is that the best we can do?
If you go there, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I can rattle on, but I get a little too...
We'll take a six-year-old limo guy over there and say, hey, we've got two hundred ninety-nine thousand miles, tell me it's no good.
So I just, you know, again, I'm rattling a little passionate about it, but if you're not passionate, it's not worth doing, I guess.
That's right. Good for you.
So that's what we're asking, just something other than just me running around and Chuck running around with the other limo companies asking for more support, that's all.
We appreciate the work. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you'll be getting back to us with how it turns out.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. You'll know if you see us running around in the summer or not.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just keep it up, Doug.
I know.
Tell them like you told us. Tell them like you told us tonight. Tell the, when you go to the hearing on March twenty-first.
Oh, yeah.
You know, do the same thing you just did here, it was great.
They're all, they're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
We can talk about, they don't have to respond or answer, and they, you can ask them questions, they don't have to respond.
Yeah.
So all these, if you write down, submit it, that's what gets put in and filed.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is comments from interested citizens, and at this time, we're going to open the microphone for anyone to come forward from the public.
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. Can I hand out a document?
You want to give it to the town clerk? Yes, please.
All right. I have two items. The first is kind of quick, which was just an item on the agenda, and I did not read Abel Collins' draft resolution looking to repeal the master lever voting, so I don't know if there were some details in there that were objectionable, but I do hope that the town council would support that as a concept, or at least, you know, discuss it in, in the future. From my perspective, I think the best way to get balance back in government is make every person who wants to hold elected office earn each individual vote. I think when people get votes, it's just because of being, belonging to a party, it can, it's detrimental to the process. All right. So, I'm sorry I haven't been here every other Monday night like I used to be. So I'm here, I've lived in South Kingstown since nineteen ninety-three, I've been a taxpayer since nineteen ninety-six. My oldest will be graduating the high school in a few months, so I've had at least one child, and I've got five children that attend the public schools, so I've had children in the public schools for thirteen years now. I've been an advocate, I guess, for ten years. So I've been pretty involved, you guys know that. This past November, I won election, very fortunately, I'm very privileged to serve the town of South Kingstown in a formal capacity as a member of the South Kingstown School Committee. But I'm coming here as a taxpayer and interested citizen. Probably is clear that I don't speak for the South Kingstown School Committee, but I just want to be clear that I'm just here speaking for myself. All right, so what I'm bringing forward, what I handed out is just a concern, it's a public document that was passed in executive session, so that's not an open session, and it's pertaining to the teacher contract, and there's a fiscal, collective bargaining fiscal impact statement that is now required, two thousand and eight, as I understand it, the state of Rhode Island, I think it makes sense, said you, if you're going to, whenever you do a contract, collective bargaining with a union, you have to prepare a fiscal impact statement. And so how that reads, it's law sixteen dash two dash twenty-one dash point six. Prior to executing any collective bargaining agreement between the school committee and representatives of teachers and/or other school employees, the school committee in any municipality or regional school district with an elected school committee goes on, but it says, shall prepare or cause to be prepared a collective bargaining fiscal impact statement. These statements shall set forth in dollar amounts estimates of the fiscal impact during the term of the proposed agreement. And as I look at it, you know, with that fiscal impact statement that's right in there, that there's budget reductions for year one, which is this year we're moving toward, of one point six eight five million dollars, which represents about thirty to thirty-five positions. So my concern is, is that this doesn't really, and those positions had nothing to do with the contract negotiation. So I don't think that this impact statement reflects what the law is looking for, the law, as I understand, is looking for, what is the impact of the contract, and this is wrapping in the budget process into the contract negotiation as I, as I see it, so, and then it actually goes to year two, where it talks about an eight hundred thousand dollar budget reduction. So this was voted on, on a six to one vote, executive session, this is before, really, the budget hearings, budget work sessions, and so I'm concerned that this does not, that this is actually in violation of the law, and, you know, my concern on top of that is that really, it's bypassing the budget process, because this is setting a document with this reduction before there's been a full public hearing, which would allow community members to have a say and decide if they want whatever reductions are being proposed. So I don't know how you can address this. I know school is one thing, town's another thing, but it seems to me the school budget is, does become the town budget, and I would think that the town would want to know that the school is following a proper process.
I just have a question, Jonathan.
All right.
If this was an executive session, is this confidential information?
It's, I mean, it was released to public, this is a public document.
It was.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay. Questions here at the table?
Yes, I'm bringing, I'm bringing this forward, it's, it's a public document, yes. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, Jonathan, I'm just reading that first word, prior, prior to. So are you saying the vote took place with only certain folks knew of the fiscal impact? Were all school committee members involved before the release of the fiscal impact statement?
It was, everybody was there to vote on this document.
But there was no prior discussion who should do what, where? Were these cuts correct, should they take place, but, I mean...
Not that I'm aware of.
Are you simply meant to take a vote?
We're voting on...
Contract was already approved, you simply meant to take a vote?
No, no, well, we voted on the contract, the contract was voted on, and this fiscal impact statement, as I understand it, was voted on at that same time, it was voted as one, one item.
All right, so that was included in, in the entire package that you all voted on as a committee?
Correct.
Okay.
Carol?
So prior to executing the collective bargain, bargaining agreement between the school committee and the representative of the teachers, dot, 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 everybody else, et cetera, you received this fiscal impact statement, right? Prior to them executing the agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And the fiscal impact statement has to set forth in dollar amounts estimates of the fiscal impact during the term of the proposed agreement. So this, it, you know, looking at this, it does do that. What you're questioning, and I think, this is what you're questioning, I think they've abided by the law, I don't see any problem with that, what, what you're questioning is, what does this one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-three actually represent, this deduction, this reduction, excuse me?
Well, it is representing thirty to thirty-five positions.
So is that what you're opposed to? Or are you opposed to the...
Well, basically, it was, as I'm looking at it, and it is a question, I mean, and it's unfortunate, we can't have this discussion at the school committee table, but that's, I don't set the agenda over there, you know, and so I'm sorry that I'm here, you know, bringing this to you, but I'm, you know, I think it should be discussed and figured out. You know, that, that seems to me that once that die was cast, once, once the position was taken, that this will be the reduction for this year, then the whole rest of the next three budget meetings, it was already decided that it was going to happen. Because how could we vote this, saying that there's going to be these reductions, and then you have all these budget discussions? Were the budget discussions really, were we really making a decision, was the decision already made?
I don't know, but it does look like...
That's my question.
They presented you with the document as they were, you know, in compliance with the law.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure if it is...
I'm just questioning what the details are, I guess.
I'm not sure that it is in compliance with the law.
And it looks like the school committee had appointed a negotiation committee to work with negotiating this contract, and it looks like they did their job, they should have brought it back, different pieces, as the negotiations were going along with school committee members, you know, in executive sessions, and then they moved forward, the negotiation team. So, that's usually what happens.
I mean, it looks, I mean, to me, as, as I would, as I'm reading the, the law, there's always interpretation, that's why lawyers exist, right?
Sure.
Yeah, but it looks to me like, what the, what the state is trying to get to is to say, every time that a school committee is passing or adopting a new contract, what is the fiscal impact of that contract? And so with this, with them wrapping in, with the school committee wrapping in budget, it's very difficult to determine what is the fiscal impact of the contract. I think the state is trying to say, when you're doing this, you're going to have to disclose to the public, is it going to save the community money? Is it going to cost the community money? And when you wrap in the budget information, to me, it makes it as clear as mud, and so what's the point of having the law? If it's going to be clear as mud, you, to me, you would want clarity, you know, that's why the law was passed, as I would think of it, to have the clarity and transparency.
I mean, I completely understand what you're saying, but I think your fiscal impact in, as it's defined in dollars and cents in the law, it looks like they did this. Now, what I think you're questioning is, what is the actual impact on the educational system by these decreases? I think that's what you're asking.
Excuse, I, I just need to interrupt, as I want to keep everyone in compliance with the open meetings law. You can continue to discuss this, we're going back and forth now on a subject, but you just need to vote to add this to the agenda, just so we, we, normally during public comment, you know, people provide information, there may be one or two, but now we're getting into a discussion, so if someone could just move to add a discussion of the school committee fiscal impact statement to tonight, and then you're free to discuss.
So moved?
Second.
Could I suggest that there's a second option? The second option is that this doesn't belong before the council tonight, it belongs before the school committee and the council on Wednesday night, at the time that the budget review was made.
Thank you. And so that they can actually be involved in the conversation too. You know, I really don't want to talk about people who aren't here to hear their side of it, so I would prefer that we do talk about this Wednesday. Is that good?
I just wanted to, my questions were trying to clarify what he was getting at, actually, you know, was it the fiscal, the dollars and cents, or was it how it was actually being applied, you know, to the education?
I think it's, I think it's very difficult for any school committee member, and certainly any member of the public, to really understand what impact this is going to have on the school system, if any, okay? Where, before there was even a public budget discussion, okay, the only public, the only budget discussion that occurred before this was the pro forma here, pretty much, you know, and we had, maybe had a preliminary one, but just pro forma. Okay, so this was passed, and then we start our public budget meetings in the school committee, so this was already set, this is what we're going to cut.
You know, at this time, I think we need to move forward with Carol and Jim, so let's take a vote on that, so we can add it to the agenda, so we can continue the discussion. Okay? So we have a motion by Carol and seconded by Jim, any further discussion to add this to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Paul?
I was just saying that it just pertains to the collective bargaining, it doesn't pertain to the budget per se. That's, it's, it's, this was involved in the collective bargaining, this was not involved in the budget, which is what we're going to be talking about on Wednesday night.
Again, I think what Jonathan's trying to tell us is, what is the impact of this? Of the, of the decrease? Is that what you're trying to, is that your, what you're trying to...
That's, that's a small piece of it.
That's a small piece.
The bigger, the bigger piece of it is, you know, they talk about, you know, wanting to focus on student achievement. I think the best way to focus on student achievement is to have an actual process and follow it, that then there's an honest, open conversation about, okay, we're going to cut thirty to thirty-five positions, what impact on this, you know, what impact on the school system is there going to be, if any? Maybe it's the exact right thing, but that discussion really didn't happen, and I think that the main reason it didn't happen is because before the budget process even started, in the teacher contract, this document with the teacher contract, they said, we're going to cut one point seven million dollars. So where, to me, with the, with the teacher contract, it would say, okay, this is, we, there's a two percent lump sum salary increase to the stop, top ten, you know, step-ten teachers, okay? Well, that impact was five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so that's known. And if there were some savings, which are a little bit of savings in there, you put that in there, then you look and you say, okay, we signed a teacher contract, this is what it cost, this is what it saved, and either it cost us some more money, or it saved us some more money. But the budget reductions have nothing to do with the contract.
Okay. Well, I think they probably do. I think they probably do have something to do with the contract, I mean, based on whatever they agreed upon, which I, you know, I'm not privy to all of that stuff, I mean, they needed to make certain reductions and to get where they needed to go with the contract, I mean...
I disagree.
I just don't know what those reductions were.
I don't think that's the case.
I, I'm just...
Well, I mean, they, they, you know, there's, I don't have it in front of me, I don't have it, okay?
Yeah.
But so they're cutting, you know, eight teacher assistants, eight clerical, you know, I'm just talking, you know, I'm just using, just putting numbers out there for frame of reference, so this is not, I don't have these notes.
It's not actual numbers, these are, are these actual?
They're not, well, these are, if I had it with me, I could give you the exact numbers, but there's thirty to thirty-five positions, six special ed teachers, a few other, yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I really would feel more comfortable talking about it on Wednesday with the school committee present, seeing that they were part of the negotiation team that may have been, had that information and discussed that information, so I, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with the discussion unless the town council prefers to continue.
I just have one question.
Is that okay with you, Cap?
I don't mind hearing them out, but...
Yeah. Jim?
Jonathan, the union and your negotiating team, they negotiated out these employees, correct, these positions, is that correct? There was an agreement between them?
I don't, I don't.
That they negotiated out this? They didn't give a dollar amount to the school committee and the public, we've got to find a million seven. This was negotiated between the union and your negotiating team from the school committee to get rid of these thirty, thirty-five positions, period?
I don't believe so. But that, I, I could be wrong on that.
So that's the question, I guess, well, that's the importance of having the school committee here to discuss that.
Yeah, I just, for whatever reason, it's, I've had difficulty having a conversation at the school committee table. Am I surprised? No, I'm not. Okay, so that's the honest answer. But it is what it is. So I don't have all the answers, this is a concern that I have, I don't think that this follows a process that really allows people to weigh in and have a give and take on it. So that's, that's why I'm bringing this forward. And if it could, if the conversation could happen at the school committee table, that would be much better, and then would have... But it is what it is. So, I don't have all the answers. This is a concern that I have. I don't think that this follows a process that really allows people to weigh in and have a give and take on it. So, that's, that's why I'm bringing this forward. And if it could, if the conversation could happen at the school committee table, that would be much better. And then, would have, would have the answer. So, I wanted to bring it to you as a private citizen, somebody who cares about the communities, trying to have the best process possible for taxpayers and for the children of South Kingstown. And so, I thought I would bring it in here tonight, figuring that, yes, we will talk about it on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from interested citizens? Are there other people that would like to come to the microphone?
Doral Beasley, Kingston, Rhode Island. The last month, for the third time, within about the last year and a half, we had a major storm visit South County. Plenty of downed trees, telephone poles, power lines, widespread power outages in the town. The reason I've come back tonight is because last year, in these chambers, a meeting took place at which the planning department presented a proposal for an emergency connector between Biscuit City and Teft Hill. That evening, there were quite a number of Teft Hill residents and attendants, and they were expressing their disapproval for that proposal. They didn't feel that connector should be joined to Teft Hill. As that meeting progressed, another alternative was brought forward to connect the emergency connector from Biscuit City to Enterprise Terrace, which is part of Heritage, Heritage Drive off of South Road. By the end of the meeting, there seemed to be consensus. I had thought there was, seemed to be a consensus for a redesign to be done and then have another public meeting, at which that would be shown to the public. After the last month's storm, I started making some inquiries. You don't have the sheets there, but anyway, what happened in Biscuit City was, for this storm, a tree was, had come down on Stonehenge, on the corner of Stonehenge. And with it, it brought down power lines. So, it took three days for that tree to be removed because of the power line issue. Luckily, there's the second egress out for the people in Blueberry Hill and down in that area. So, they, they weren't, they weren't in any dire, you know, they weren't in dire straits there. But what it brought to the forefront again is the fact that Biscuit City, with the one access out to 138, is still an accident awaiting to happen. And if that tree had fallen down between 138 and, say, Helm Road, then it could have been, you know, a real problem there. So, I did a little, so in the last couple of weeks, I've done some investigating what's going on. And what I found out was that after last year's meeting, the Teft Hill Association decided to hold this project hostage. This is from, this is what I've gleaned. And if I'm incorrect, maybe the town solicitor, if he knows something, he can correct me. But the project's being held up now by the Teft Hill Association because they decided that they weren't going to, they weren't going to give the town the easement from White Horn over to Enterprise across the open space, Teft Hill open space, unless the town gave up its easement over to High Meadow. Now, to me, that's like, is that not true?
I want to make the same request. Could we add to the agenda discussion of the Teft Hill easement? Just so we hover here, because there's going to be a little bit of discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Here are drafts of the easement that have been going back and forth. Donnie Packer represents the association, and I assure you tomorrow, I will follow up again. But we've been going back and forth with the terms and conditions of that easement. We're looking for something very similar, the same 50 with, with the same ability to put utility lines through there, just like the one that exists now. That has not yet been approved by the association, so, but we have been in discussions. Right now, we're waiting for a response to my last correspondence with regard to what the town was looking for. But there was nothing...
Is there a big quo quo?
No.
To get one, you have to give up the other?
Absolutely not. To my knowledge, and I've been directly dealing with this, that that has never been a requirement on either side. So, I'm not sure where that came from, probably just a rumor mill. It's more, the issue involves the width of the easement and the use, whether it's just for travel or also for, you know, an underground utility or whatever can go through there.
Okay, because I was, I've always hoped that, you know, way back when, when we had some green space stuff going on in town, that the easement that we wouldn't be using for a road connector to High Meadow could at some point, maybe be like a little bike path connection over to that connector. And then you would have another, you know, means of people to ride bikes and walk to the university and whatever, without having to go on South Road, which would be good, but, all right. So, and that will, as long as we're, as long as we're moving forward, because...
I'll get an update.
As the letters that I just gave the clerk show, my first letter was to Jim O'Neill in 2001, when he was the president. The second one was to the chief of police in 2006. And the last one was to Mrs. Whaley in 2011. And do we have to wait much longer? Thank you.
Thank you. All the comments from interested citizens? Jim?
Well, lighten things up a little bit. Listen, we had an exciting Sunday evening. Can I move into this? I'm going to.
I'm glad you're doing it, because it's on my list, but you go for it.
You know, the Elks Lodge entertained the SK Care's annual spelling bee. I guess it's eighth or ninth, and a wonderful fundraising event. And the spelling bee, and the town council put together their team. And many of the reports that we've received, this was probably the strongest field ever of participants in the spelling bee. And the town council was led by Carol McIntee, assisted by Mary Kane, I believe her name is, and her sister, McKean, and their sister Nancy, and yours truly, myself. And the town council, boy, right from the get-go, we started behind all the other teams due to my influence with the very first word, which of course, was immediately categorized as incorrect overwhelmingly. Three voices, wrong, wrong, wrong. Apparently, I'd spent most of the weekend trying to remember how to spell Mississippi, so I converted that to that particular word, double S's, and it didn't count. Anyway, Captain McIntee, at that point, benched me. I was benched immediately and asked to just provide support for hydration and food and just gentle cheerleading. And after that, the team was perfect. Every round, the team was perfect. And it came down to three teams that were left. The first two fumbled with their words. And the third word came to our table, and Carol, with her incredible proficiency with Latin and Italian, followed through with perfect spelling of that particular word. And to all of you out there, the town council walked away with first place of the Care's spelling bee. And I know Carol didn't wear hers tonight. I wasn't going to wear mine, but this is what we received.
Winner?
Winner?
That's great.
Hank, you got this.
You are a winner, Jim.
Anyway, it was a wonderful event. Ella was up on the bench. She was a judge and couldn't join the team, but we were, what a great team. And this Captain McIntee, I tell you, she was tough. But, boy, to be benched so early in the competition. But I understood what she had to do.
Go buy us all drinks, Jim. That was his, that was his...
It sounded like you inspired.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. I thought I would. Anyway, was that light enough?
That was great, that was great.
Very good.
It was a great night.
I have another issue. Where do you want to go now?
Go, I have a list, and I'll follow suit.
I don't know, Jeff, maybe somebody can help me. I've gotten a number of calls on the Roy Copperners' first 28, first two rows of moving homes back. And I guess it was all approved a month or six weeks ago. But now, there seems to be some hang-up with a few feet here and a few feet there. And believe me, I don't know the whole reason. I'm just getting these phone calls, and folks are concerned that they're not going to be able to move their cottages back in time for the summer season. Can someone bring me up to date with what's happening there?
Let's start out with the application. The application to move the first two rows to become Row 19 or Row 20 went to the zoning board last, last month. At that meeting, there was a determination made, and part of the vote was that the separation would be 100 feet from the 19th row for where the new row was going to start.
Between 19th row and open space, or 18th and 19th row, or the street?
There was 100, there was going to be 100-foot distance between what the back row was and the new row that was coming in.
Okay, okay.
And that was part of the motion. Subsequent to that, the property owner and their engineer contacted the chair of the zoning board and indicated that they felt that it should be 110 feet. Well, obviously, if it's part of the motion for 100 feet, 110 feet is a 10% difference. It's going to require that it go back to the zoning board after advertising, which means that it won't, will have to go back to a rehearing. Now, the question of whether there will be a summer season for those units that were on first and second row that needed to be moved is really nothing to do with the town. It has to do with the timing associated with the application and the planning process employed by the property owner. And those decisions were certainly outside of the control of the town. So, if in fact, they get the approvals, and they are unable to meet the requirements for the septic and the waterline installations or utility lines installation, it's really their determination as to whether or not they have those units available for rental purposes this summer. It's not the determination of the building official. It's not the zoning board. It's really the timing that it's taken for that property owner to process through the, through the various requirements that were necessary.
So, the property owner, originally, the application was for 100 feet. And then they came in with an amendment, 110 feet?
Let me have Jeff deal with it directly. The, what, the 100 feet was in the resolution that was going to be approved by, that was approved by the zoning board and would have been subject to the chair's signature. However, after the engineers and the property owners said, "No, we can't work with 100. We need the 110." It became evident that that was going to have to go back to a formal reconsideration by the board to amend that, that, that distance. For, that's the general, I can give you the general. I can't give you the specifics, because I wasn't at the zoning board meeting, but Jeffrey was.
The original application with a plan that was submitted by the applicant showed 140 feet from the pavement of Row 18, the existing pavement, to the next row, which was going to be two rows of cottages, moved leapfrog from the front to the rear. And the board, with a great discussion, felt that that was a little bit too much room, that they were going to chew up too much of the cornfield. And between the two engineers that sit on the zoning board, along with the attorney that's on the zoning board, and the two attorneys that were also involved, it came down to 100 feet. Now, the applicant's engineer was relying upon data from a previous plan that someone else had done, which he evidently hadn't verified. But there since had been, since the inception of that plan, additions and decks put on. So, when he cranked it down to 100 feet, all of a sudden, the, with the setback that they had from the pavement and the road-to-road setback, it ended up being very tight between the cottages on the rows and what they were requiring space between cottages along the street. So, there was a whole bunch of confusion there. So, in the interim, they were trying to work it out and see if, you know, perhaps can we reopen the hearing or what? But the motions had been made. They had been recorded synovically. And, you know, the decision had to go the way it was made and the way it was voted on. Since then, I've been made aware, and I haven't received the application yet, that they would, they are going to reapply to amend the motion that was made to more than 110 feet or 100 feet. Yeah, the motion was made for 100 feet. They kind of thought they could get by with 110. That may not be the case, when they've actually gone out and verified the distances between the existing cottages that are there with the additions that didn't necessarily show on the original plan as to what, you know, they will be. So, there may have to be an adjustment there to make it a more workable, viable solution. Until, until that happens, you know, it's up in the air. There are other circumstances and approvals that, that they have to acquire from DEN because they're taking those two rows off of the gray water system that are all hooked up and reconfiguring them. And they're going to have to repipe them into the gray water system at a different location. DEN has to approve that. Coastal Resources has to approve the moving of the cottages, even though that, I'm sure they're going to be very well happy to see them move farther away from the shoreline. You know, I really, you know, I don't think that's going to be a large stumbling block for them, but they still have to go through the process.
Wow.
And there's a, there's an awful lot of miscommunication and speculation between the 30-some cottage owners and the owners. And there's too many people talking in too many directions, and no one's quite sure as to what's happening there day to day.
Unfortunately, I mean, from the town's perspective, we have to go based on what the specific approval is. And if the approval isn't what they want, then we've got to do the reconsideration. But the real issue here is that the owner needs to, before they come in with the application, they need to see what the widths and the lengths of these units are that they're going to move, what the distances they need from the back row to see whether that 100 feet or 110, or it may end up being 120 feet. That's not anybody else's responsibility, other than that property owner.
And again, if they decide to move just the first row this year and leave the second row, then they're going to have to submit some kind of a plan and make arrangements with Narragansett Electric to supply electricity for the second row if they're going to remain there this summer, to be serviced because the storm took out the poles and the wires, and they just eliminated and cut all, all the things off. So, they may very well have to come up with a plan and set some poles if they want to service those cottages for this summer, for the, for the one year until they can relocate the second row also.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Steve, thank you, too.
I just have a few announcements...
I just have a few announcements. First one is a very serious matter that I think that we have taken here at the town council table. It's been brought to the attention of the town council that there is a problem with dumping on private property or off-town easements, and it seems to be debris from maybe building materials from builders or, you know, garbage bags, and just wanted to make the public aware that there are names the garbage bags have gone through, and, you know, it really is not right to be dumping on private property, and we wish that everybody would bring their garbage to the transfer station. It needs to stop. Particular one neighborhood has been cleaned up, and it is just being greatly densely, you know, polluted, and it's not really fear to the residents, so this is being watched, and we would appreciate if it would stop. Carol?
I'd just like to ask Mike or maybe Captain Jaber back there, what is the fine for littering? And I'm sure this is considered littering, this is dumping, so I don't know if it's a more serious offense, but I think people should be aware if they're caught, that's the penalty.
What, what the captain's talking about would be littering on a public highway.
Well, can you just litter on someone's private property?
No, wouldn't be, based on the ordinance, I believe, it's just on the public right-of-way.
That would be more like a trespass.
Trespass?
Yeah. It's not right, and I just wanted to make sure that the public's aware that it's being watched, and there have been names that have been turned over, so hopefully the situation will cease. I also want to just echo Jim's accolades for the Kears' event. It was fabulous. And I also wanted to let the public know that the Kears is doing a golf tournament, so if people wanted to put that in their calendars to support that great cause of Kears, connecting all resources for educational support. The date is June 29. And SCFF also announced, South Kingston Educational Foundation, that there will be a fundraiser featuring Erica Van Pelt on Friday, April 5. And this is a fundraiser for a shell for to help with the acoustics in the South Kingston High School auditorium. And Erica has donated her time to give back to her community, so again, that is April 5, 2013. And at the last meeting, we had Karen Binnaker speaking about the Broad Rock Middle School Crazy Coyote Race. I just wanted to reiterate that date of April 6, and that race steps off at 9 o'clock. And a few dates on our agenda. Town council will be meeting with the school committee for the fourth work session with, this is with the school committee and town council this Wednesday at 7 o'clock. And the town council will be adopting their preliminary budget at 5 o'clock on the 18th. And we will also holding a ledger, a meeting with our legislators. Hopefully, we will hear a response back from all of them, and that's March 25 at 6 o'clock, right before our regular town council meeting. So just a few dates I wanted to share with the public. With that said, any other public comments? And I will move to town manager's report.
I have no specific comments this evening unless council has questions.
Any questions for Steve? No, thank you. Mike?
[inaudible]
Okay, which brings us to appointments.
We have two appointments tonight. I move that we reappoint Susan Marcus to the Economic Development Committee. Her term expired in March of 2013, and she'd be reappointed for three years, taking her to, her term to March 2016.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries?
Also, I'd like to move that we reappoint John Bernato to the zoning board of review. His term expired this month, March 2013. He would be reappointed for three years, which would take him to March 2016.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I just have a clarifying question for Dale. Along with John Bernato, we have that Douglas Bates, but it doesn't seem as though he has sent a letter asking to be reappointed or still interested. So do we have to wait for that letter? No? So if we just wanted to-
Does he want to stay on?
Douglas Bates.
Okay, I move that we reappoint Douglas Bates to the zoning board of review. His term expired March of 2013, and he would also be appointed for three years, taking him till March 2016.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and maybe Chris Massier.
Chris Massier, does he want to be reappointed? Do we know? Yes? We don't know? I move that we reappoint Christopher Massier to the Economic Development Committee. His term expired March 2013. He would be reappointed for three years, taking him till March 2016.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? Jim?
Yeah, I should have asked with the previous candidate. I guess we've never had a policy where they have to either write us a letter, call in that they have an interest, we can just move forward? Pardon?
We sent them a letter asking them if they wish to be reappointed.
Failed on the previous one, but, but I'm not going to approve this one until we get a letter back that they have an interest. I should have said something on the, on Mr. Bates.
Do, do they have to send a letter, or can they specifically do it by a phone call? Or is there any policy? I know you send them a letter, and it's supposed to respond by a letter, or, I'm sorry, I just don't know.
They respond by a phone call.
Okay.
We send a letter that all they have, in a self-addressed return envelope, stamped, that all they have to do is check whether they want to be reappointed or not.
Okay.
We try to make it as easy for them.
So should we wait?
Yeah, why don't we wait?
Why don't we wait on all, because we just appointed Douglas Bates, but I mean-
Well, since I avoided, voted in the affirmative, can I, Michael, now, can I ask that that be reconsidered?
Why don't we wait, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I really want to see that they have an interest. I mean, heaven sakes, we spent all this time up here, they can darn well call us or write a letter. Good grief. All right, so we've got to vote on that reconsideration?
You just reappoint, you just reappointed, so if you want to reconsider and, and change the reappointment until such time as you hear from the candidate.
That's the resolution I would make, then.
Okay.
Second.
Are we sending the reappointment until-
Till we hear from him.
Yeah.
We might as well know he wants to do it, before we appoint him for three years.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, we have motion and second, we're going to vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll hold off on Chris Massier and wait till, um, hear from them. Thank you. Okay. Which brings us to New Business 13B. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Emmy O'Brien &amp; Sons Incorporated, P.O. Box 650, Medfield, Massachusetts, for the purchase of one playground structure with attached slide for the town beach in accordance with all bid specifications and an amount not to exceed $10,438, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated March 4, 2013, entitled Bid Recommendation for Playground Structure with Attached Slide.
This is to replace a 17-year-old piece of equipment, climbing equipment at the, the beach. Low bid, there was two bids submitted, low bid was the Emmy O'Brien that's recommended for a ward.
Makes sense, and I move approval of New Business Resolution B.
Certainly does make sense, I'll second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item C is a resolution authorizing an amendment to a contract originally granted on April 26, 1999, and amended on March 26, 2007, and February 22, 2010, to Geological Field Services Incorporated, 156 Tremont Street, Melrose, Massachusetts, for landfill gas consulting engineer services, from an amount not to exceed $25,000 to an amount not to exceed $30,000, as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated March 4, 2013, entitled Rose Hill Landfill Methane Monitoring Consulting Engineer Contract Amendment.
As we've noted during the budget process, we continue to have expenses associated with the closeout of the Superfund sites. We have two residential units that have methane detection units within their basements. On an annual basis, this company is responsible for filing a report with EPA and State Department of Environmental Management on the levels of methane that have been recorded in those units. We're asking to extend the contract, which was initiated in 1999.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business Item C.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item E is a resolution affirming and accepting revisions to the document entitled Town of South Kingston Office of the Town Manager Tax Exemption and Stabilization Program Guidance Statement, as originally adopted on February 28, 2011, with amendments agreed to at a joint work session of the Council and Economic Development Committee held on February 29, 2012, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated March 6, 2013, entitled Town Council Affirmation of Revisions to Town of South Kingston Office of the Town Manager Tax Exemption and Stabilization Program Guidance Statement.
The town council met on February 21 this year in a joint work session with the Economic Development Committee. At that time, there was general discussion relative to a previous work session that was held on February 29 of 2012, when the council and the economic development last met pertaining to the Tax Exemption and Stabilization Program Guidance Document that had been prepared by the, by the town administration in 2011. The, those discussions came out with a final document back in 2012. However, there was never a formal town council adoption of the revised guidance document. There was discussion on one change that was suggested in the most recent meeting with the Economic Development Committee. The council believed that that amendment wasn't necessary, and that the intent of the guidance document, as presented in 2012, represented the, the council's best interest in the, in the proposal, and that they would bring it back to the town council's regular council meeting for a formal adoption, so that that, we would then be able to provide greater dissemination of the information to the business community. Essentially, the guidance document pertains to the town council's encouragement of providing tools in attracting economic development within the community. The Tax Exemption and Stabilization Program provides opportunity for new businesses coming into the community that will generate new employment opportunities, as well as provide general benefits to the community, with an ability that provides an investment of $2.5 million, approximately $2.5 million, to be considered for some type of tax stabilization or abatement program over a term not to exceed 10 years. The guidance document lists a number of program priorities that would be considered on any application that was filed with the Town Manager's office. Prior to the council adopting any tax abatement, stabilization, or equalization, there would be a requirement that there be a formal public hearing after proper advertising to provide all town residents with the opportunity to be heard on the issue before any final approvals were provided by the council. I can go into any level of detail the council wishes. I will say that the Exemption and Stabilization Program Guidance Document is or will be available within the town's website, and we will also make copy available for it with any businesses that are interested.
Thank you, Steve.
Any questions? I'll try to answer them for you.
Can we have a motion first and second?
I'm, I'd like to first say that we should thank the Economic Development Committee for their hard work. They've made, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and they have made significant changes, and I move that we formally adopt the Tax Exemption and Stabilization Program Guidance Statement, as presented in New Business Item E.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Like also to echo Carol's, you know, great statements and working with the town and all the town staff that worked to come up with this as well. So, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I know Vin, Vin would have brought this up, I just wanted to make sure that the town council has on their calendars the Tuesday, March 19, which is the West Kingston Elementary School. It is the West Kingston Village Study Project, starting at 7 o'clock. I was remiss to mention that one. So with that said, is there anything else for the good of the order? Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we are officially adjourned at 10 o'clock. All right, Wednesday night.
They benched you, Jim.
Benched me?
Oh, Jesus.
Carol just said, last seat, sit down, be quiet.
What was the word?
Oh, you don't want to know.
Oh, my God, the words were so bad.
As I told you, Mississippi. Ella won't tell you. I hope she won't tell you.